Anyone else do it?
Right.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order and welcome our guests from the Planning and Zoning Board and Mr. Price. I need to have a roll call, please, since it is an official meeting.
Ms. Muse? Yes. Ms. Stevens? Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed? Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Beras? Mr. Kim?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Dirk.
Well, thank you, everyone. Nice to see you. It's been a while for me personally since I've been down to Monticello. A little bit of background, you know, Ansel Glank, we're a 90-year-old local government firm. That's what we do. We represent communities across the state, kitty corner from Moline to Effingham and from O'Fallon to Wadsworth and Winter Parburg. So those are the corners, I guess, kind of of the state. And it's a pleasure to be here. My background is I've been doing this for 35 years. I was the Plan Commission Chairman. I live in Naperville. I was the Plan Commission Chairman for four. So talking to Plan Commissioners and to the council at the same time is not only a great idea, but fun for me in a perverse way for you. The, so the presentation, I talked to Terry and Callie about, you know, where we are and kind of an orientation. So a little bit, a little bit of this is going to be eighth grade civics class and a little bit of it's going to be, you know, sort of where we are now post-COVID and procedures and all the rest. So to begin with, you've got in front of you what would have been a PowerPoint, but the PowerPoint would have been behind the mayor and that's not going to work. So we printed them out and we'll take you along with the slides and then we'll talk about things from there. But the first thing we want to talk about is governmental power. So again, eighth grade civics class, you'll recall that in the Constitutional Convention, when the United States was thinking about moving from the Articles of Confederation to some other form of federal government, and they reached the Great Compromise where the federal government was going to have the powers that the states gave it and wrote down in the Constitution and no others, and that the states were going to keep everything else to themselves. Well, the state of Illinois turns around and does the same thing for you all. It says, "You have the powers that we grant you, that we write down in the statutes and no others, and we're keeping everything to ourself." And that's how it was for about a century. And then in 1970, at the Constitutional Convention, they added a thing called home rule. If you are 25,001 people in your population, you are automatically home rule status. Or if you pass a referendum that grants you home rule status, you have it. And home rule says, okay, well, then you're like the state of Illinois unless we say you aren't. So it turns it upside down. Instead of you have only the powers written down, it becomes you have all of our powers unless we took them away. And for you, you're not a home rule community. So you have only the powers that are given to you by statute. And so that governs the Plan Commission, because there's a whole statutory scheme about the Plan Commission, and it governs the council under the Illinois Municipal Code. And so the Dillon's Rule, named for Judge Dillon, is for every action you take, we have to find a source of authority for what it is you do. And so we're always on a quest for the source of your authority. And when it comes to the Plan Commission, again, there's a statutory scheme about that that establishes the Plan Commission. And so a little bit about the government at work when it comes to the Plan Commission. So as part of the Northwest Territories, Illinois being one of those states, though the way powers were granted then is that there was a certain level of control of government over land that hadn't been in existence truly before that. So for Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan, townships and impressed the bound of law. And from that, then other states like Ohio turn to look at, how can we govern land use? And Euclid, Ohio, outside of Cleveland, famously created land use regulations and were sued because the developer said, "You've taken away value. What you've restricted to me means I can only get X per square foot. If I could do whatever I wanted, I could get more per square foot. You've taken money from me." And the court affirmed what Euclid did in terms of land use and zoning, saying it's part of your police powers. And that's been accepted. And so Illinois began with, you have police powers over land use and you can regulate how land is used in your municipality, provided you do the following things. You have to have a rational, reasonable, planned basis for how you take away the freedom to use one's own property. And so Plan Commission, in your case, it's a Planning and Zoning Board. We've combined some things I'll talk about. But the Planning Commission has to sit down and say, "Here is our master plan for how we intend to use the properties within our municipal boundaries." And that creates zoning designations for the different properties and uses and how you're going to live together. And impressed on top of that then comes a subdivision code, which is how we live together in a more urban setting, with sidewalks and street lamps, those kinds of questions. And once you have this plan and it's gone through a hearing process where people come in and say that's good or bad, but we hear from the public, that's the consent of the governed by which our democracy is judged. Once you have that plan and it's adopted by the elected officials, we now have zoning in Monticello and you're required as the fulfilling the Plan Commission roles of the statute. So anytime it changes, it has to come to you for that hearing. We have to go through that process of, how are we going to involve ourselves in private land rights without the public being involved? And then you tee it up again for the elected officials to make the final decision. They are accountable to the electorate. So that's how we get, in basic sense, the powers to do anything that all of you are doing. That's how the council works. That's how the Plan Commission works. We have to find that source of authority and then we're limited to it. With Slides 1 and 2, if you want to turn over to Slide Executive Branch, talk about the branches of government. So Mayor Stoner is the Executive Branch. He's the CEO. He has the certain powers, but it's not as though he is the city administrator. The powers of the mayor are largely enforcement and regulatory. He's the chief law enforcement officer, and he's the only elected official that has any power to do anything by himself. As typically as liquor commissioner, those are where those powers are emphasized most. The legislative branch, you all as aldermen, have no individual power to do anything. I hate to tell you that, but you have none. You only act collectively. If you were a commissioned form of government, it would be different, but you're not. You have wards, you're aldermen, and as such, you can only act together as a body. So none of you can speak for the city individually. None of you can bind the city individually. You can only act collectively. And we'll talk about the Open Meetings Act because that's why that's a thing. If you can only act collectively, then we care about when you're together. Because when you're together talking about things collectively, that's when you can get into mischief, and that's why we want to know what you're doing together. But individually, that's why we don't care if one of you is talking to the other one of you, because you can't do anything. Two of you doesn't make the majority of a quorum to do anything. So we don't care. But when we get a majority of a quorum together, now we have power, the magic circle's coming together, electricity is fingertips. That's when... So you have then the authority to pass legislation, to create how you want to govern together, you know, the majority rules in that sense. Things like ordinances, resolutions, and motions, there's a hierarchy of them. Ordinances require ordinances to be changed. Ordinances can also change resolutions and prior motions. A motion by itself can't change an ordinance. You have to have an ordinance to change an ordinance. It's a dignity thing because an ordinance requires the majority of the corporate authorities, not just who's there today. So if there's only five of you and there's three, that's not enough to pass. You need four votes to pass an ordinance, even though three to two would be a majority in the room. And in those situations, there are kind of situations where the mayor can vote. So there are times when you need to have a minimum of four yes votes from the legislative body. Those are rare, but we've talked about them when they happen. The administrative branch is aimed for Terry, your administrator, the, and it's the day-to-day business. And when it comes to the day-to-day, Terry has more power than any individual alderman because he's charged and given authority by your code of ordinances to do certain things and to make certain decisions. In some respects, you have what's called the one-employee model, where Terry's your one employee and he's responsible for the performance of all other employees. And you judge his performance by their collective performance. It's the day-to-day operation, the day-to-day with the employees, and then what other other duties you assign by your official policy. And, you know, the kind of things where we get into trouble is when, you know, individual people get outside of their, their role. It's not Terry's role to make policy. It's his job to apply your policies and to enforce them and to execute. So not your job to handle the day-to-day water billing. It's your job to ask Terry about that, but it's your job to set possibly rates or when you're going to do disconnects or during COVID, what kind of relief you are going to give people. Those are policy decisions the elected officials make. The day-to-day is left to the staff. And that's the same for the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission is this body that's setting essentially the recommended policy about how we're going to use land together. But they are not the people to do the individual investigation. They're not the ones who are supposed to go out there and count cars for a traffic count. They're not measuring curb height. That's left to staff to do. Everybody here, I'm sure, has seen, you know, Twelve Angry Men, right? The Jimmy Stewart movie, the great movie about the jurors, and he comes in with that pocket, he comes in with that switchblade, remember, that he went out and found in the store and uses that to try and throw doubt on this person's conviction? That's completely illegal. It's fun for Hollywood, but that kind of work by a juror, which is what Plan Commissions become in some, you members of the Plan Commission are jurors at some point, for you to go out and do your own investigation and bring in your own facts and display them around as the basis for it is completely outside of the process of lawmaking. That's not acceptable. In, in real life, the Twelve Angry Men, the jury would have been excused. Jimmy Stewart probably would have gone to jail, and that would have been retried, that case. So there's a process that's established by the statutes and how we work. And so everybody needs to kind of stay in their lane, as they say, to do the jobs assigned to them, and that's all for the benefit of due process of law, so that everybody gets the process to which they're entitled. Our democracy, Illinois' constitution and statutory scheme is largely founded on the philosophy of John Stuart Mill, which was that the truth is out there, but we have to shake it around a lot before we filter it out, before we separate the truth from the untruth. We have to shake it, like separating the chaff from the wheat. And so it takes a process of shaking it, where the public's involved, people are accountable, we shake it out, and without that process, we don't know that we can get the truth. And so that's a lot of what will inform the procedures of how you all move forward together. So that brings us to the Planning Commission a little bit, and I want to talk about the PZB and your power to zone. We've talked about the Plan Commission role that you all have, which is the, the planning of how the land is going to be used. Everybody refers to Euclidean zoning as though it were the mathematician. Now, it's about Euclid, Ohio, the test case that established it. And it was that this is for residential. This is where we want businesses because, and this is where we want industries because these are noisy and they're dusty and we need those things, but those are a nuisance to these people. And so we have planning to try and separate uses, to keep people safe, to make their quiet enjoyment of their homes nicer, all of those kinds of things about how we live together. Then there is the issue of, well, we recognize that one size doesn't fit all, especially when it comes to property. The property is always treated specially in the law. No two properties are considered the same, even if they're like identical lots in a post-World War II subdivision where the housing machine went down the block and just kept putting out, you know, one house after another on identical lots. The law says each and every one of those pieces of property is different and must be treated separately and can't be sort of taken in as just as, in general, as all the same. It's why there are special remedies for land, like adverse possession or getting a temporary restraining order. When it comes to property, we can do that because God's not making any more property and we have to take what we have as a limited resource that people have power and control over. And so we recognize, though, that the properties aren't the same, and so one rule for all properties isn't going to hold the day. That's not going to work. We need to be cognizant of the ability to treat unique pieces of property in unique ways. But that's not limitless. And so we come to your code and we say, "Well, we can grant variances to the zoning code, the zoning policy that's otherwise established, if certain requirements are met." And so the ultimate policymakers, the council, pass a code that says, "Here's what we're willing to vary. We're willing to vary where fence heights are. We might be willing to vary how dense the property can be used, you know, if, if you've got that regulation. We might be willing to vary side yard setbacks. We might be willing to, to vary a rear yard setback or how many accessory buildings you can have." But at some point, you have to make a decision about what you will vary and what you won't. And things that aren't in the code that says, "We will consider a variance for this," you can't then consider a variance. You might have to go get the code amended to consider a variance. So once in a while, in my eight years as a Plan Commission, you'd get a proposal to add something to the list of variances and then a request for that variance. That's not unusual. That's how it happens. But to grant it, again, just like with the master plan that the Plan Commission put down, to grant a zoning variance, you have to have criteria that are met. And so you sit as a jury to see whether or not the petitioner has made their case for getting a variance. Have they proven what they need to prove in terms of the criteria, standards by which the zoning variance is judged? Staff's job with the petitioner is to help the petitioner put it in the right framework, to use the right words, and present it in a way that you're all used to seeing on the Plan Commission. You're volunteers, you're not getting paid for it, you're doing a service to the community, and we need to fit it within these processes and we need to be respectful of your time. So that's staff's job. They work with the petitioner to get it all to you and present the case for a variance. And so you as a combined Planning Commission, which is looking at land uses, and a Zoning Board, which is looking at variances to the rules, you're a combined thing and you might see both of those kinds of cases. Let's change the zoning for this lot. I need a variance for an extra accessory use. Those kinds of things all come to you. Staff, I've seen Callie's memo, she outlines, this is your job here. These are the criteria you're charged with applying to make your decision. And we'll talk about the process of how you do that in the meeting procedures next, but that's your authority. You have, Monticello has married your zoning work and your Plan Commission work in one body. And then you have to use the powers granted to you by the city council and only the powers granted to you by city council to consider these things. The Plan Commission, like the aldermen, none of you have any individual power. The chairman has a little bit of power in the sense in the meeting because the chairman runs the meeting and has to rule on objections and procedures and how we do things. There was a time back in the day when the record of facts and testimony and evidence had to be recorded by a court reporter at the Plan Commission level, and that's all the city council could use to make their decision. That was about a two-and-a-half-year period. And it led to some weird things, and mercifully, we've changed that. We're not wed in just what's said at the Plan Commission anymore. The council gets to act in its legislative capacity and make law in the sense of policy. But back in the day, that led to weird things like, you know, an elderly lady came in and she just wanted to say, "I really would like this not to go forward because I like the trees and I like to see the trees out my back porch and I will miss the trees." And the lawyer for the petitioner wanted to cross-examine her about how much she knew about the trees. You know, "What, can you tell me what kind of trees?" So you really don't care that much about the trees. And I said, as the chair, as the chair, "No, we're not going to do this. You're not going to cross-examine Grandma about trees. That's not how this works." So you have a little bit of power, but you all work collectively as well as the Planning and Zoning Commissions. Any questions so far on your powers before we turn to your meeting? Well, for this part of it, there is, the key is that when you assemble, we're having a meeting. I told you, we care about when you're getting together because that's when you can do things, and so that's why there's an Open Meetings Act. And we'll talk some more about agendas and posting and that. But you all get to have rules of procedure. You all need to have them. We have rules of civil procedure in the courts. You need to have them here. Famously, we, we read about these things almost every day in the news because of how Washington, you know, paralyzes itself with a vote of cloture that doesn't pass. And so, you know, those kinds of odd things. Ours are simpler than that, but it's the same sort of deal. We have rules of procedure, some of which come from the Illinois Municipal Code, some of which come from the Open Meetings Act, and some of which come from your adoption of Robert's Rules of Order. Now, Robert's Rules of Order was made for a much larger legislative body with many more committees and many more intricate kinds of motions, but by and large, it gets us through. You don't need to spend a lot of time learning Robert's Rules of Order. That's, the mayor's, mayor knows what he's doing. He knows how to run the meeting. He's got a good sense of, you know, when seconds are required, when there's, when there's allowed to be debate, when there isn't. So you're not gonna, you're not gonna get anywhere with that. And moreover, you know, the, the mayor knows what he's doing. The mayor is the chair, the hearing officer runs the meeting, and that's important. But the most important point is that both bodies need to have rules of procedure because at both bodies, you have to have public comment. We'll talk about that again in a minute. And so you need to structure some rules around that because public comment happens at your meeting, even though you're going to have a hearing and even though you're going to take testimony and all the rest, you still have to have a public comment, Plan Commission, just like you have to have a public comment at City Council. And you want to have rules around that, and I've been coming to Monticello long enough to know that those rules are important for certain members of your community. So you're going to have to have some rules and you should, you know, equate yourself with them in, in doing what you're doing. The next most important thing, though, is the difference between a hearing and a meeting. And this is most important for the Plan Commission because the Plan Commission primarily has hearings and the city council primarily has meetings. Now, there are some hearings at city council. If you're annexing new land under an annexation agreement, there will eventually be a hearing at city council. We have other hearings that city councils use too, like the budget. You have to have a hearing and typically one or two people come and then that's that. Other kinds of things may trigger a hearing at city council, but that's rare. The Plan Commission, on the other hand, it's just about a hearing every meeting. That's why you're getting together, is to have a, is typically to have a hearing to get the evidence for what it is you're deciding, whether to change the zoning, to grant a special use, to grant a variance, you're going to have that. So hearings have to meet the, the standard for due process. The due process of law, all the process that is due, is taking that shaking-it-around concept and making sure everybody has a fair opportunity to present their position, and then based on that, how to, to get your work. So the, the kinds of things you're going to have hearings on are zoning map and text amendments. The map is the, you know, what the use is. Well, what does it mean to be an industrial use? So we have to go to the text. So those two together are policy, official policy of the city of Monticello. So the process of changing any of those begins with the Planning and Zoning Board. Conditional uses, which is, well, we'll consider it if you meet some additional specific kinds of criteria for a conditional use. Because all of this is based on that original plan, you have to update your comprehensive plan from time to time. That's one of the challenges that Callie always has as well. This is a little old, this is a little stale. You know, we don't need buggy whip manufacturers anymore and we have set aside these acres for buggy whip companies we need to change. The world is very different after COVID. Retail stores, the trend is everybody wants a display shop. Nobody holds inventory. One, because the supply chain's messed up, but secondly, because that's the new business model. Peloton is seeking, they'll be here, I'm sure, soon. Peloton will want to have a storefront and you can't take a bike home from there. All you can do is order it from there, but it's a place where you can come in and demo it. Same for mattress stores. They're not going to have mattresses in the back for you to take home on top of the roof of your car. You can order it and it will be delivered, but they can demo it. That's all there is. That's a new thing for retail. Well, as these new developments happen for us, you'll be challenged to update your comprehensive plan. That comes to you. You have to have a hearing on that plan because that's how we get to regulate land use to begin with at all. And you'll also get appeals. There are a few things that the zoning administrator gets to defend because we're allowed to give that kind of power and it's efficient and, you know, people don't want to have to go through the process for everything they do in their interaction with the city. But sometimes they're aggrieved by the decision made by the zoning administrator and they can bring an appeal to you and you make a recommendation. All of those things, variations as well, require hearings. And so unlike a meeting where your rules of public comment, the people get up and stand is three minutes, three-stor, five, you're so generous. You're going to regret it too. Five minutes, there's a limit. When it comes to a public hearing, there's no limit. The chair can rule on things like not being repetitive, not being irrelevant, not being obscene or, what's the word I want? Offensive or violating speech. So for example, just a quick little war story to entertain you. So when I was the chair, Naperville had a problem with teardowns where modest homes in this one part of town, ranches, maybe a split level, homes were being torn down and the, what you've read in the papers, and others, McMansions were going up in their place. And so you had literally Grandma on a little ranch and a giant three-story McMansion overnight, all her lights gone, her irises are dead, you know? And so the question was, how are we going to regulate this? And the question was, are we going to regulate pitch of height of the total roof from a point on the land? Are we going to regulate stories? What are we going to do? A gentleman gets up who was clearly inebriated, slurring his speech, grabs the podium, holds on it and says, as his testimony, "I don't think you should equate height and number of stories because what if you're a developer who's a midget and you could have five levels in, for the same height that someone, that normal people could have three?" Well, that's where as chair, I said, "Okay, stop first. That's, midget's an offensive term to people. We're not allowed, we're not going to say that, we're not going to do that, and we're not going to go here. It's not relevant to what we're discussing. That's really not the issue, is how many floors we can cram in for people." And he says, "You're anti-midget." And then he stormed out the thing. So you're allowed to control that, but otherwise, by and large, you have to take testimony from the public such as it is. And, you know, that can be tricky. I mean, I think none of us would have a problem telling a flat-earth person that, "Thank you, you're done, we're moving on." But there are other ones, as we've seen, where the court of public opinion is not quite so clear as to what's relevant evidence or good evidence or all the rest. And that's the chair's job to rule on those things. Typically, you're lucky to have Callie, she filters that for you, but there's only so much staff can do. At some point, we have to allow people to have their day before the governmental tribunal to petition you for whatever it is that the petition is due for. And so a hearing is different than a meeting. When you're having a public hearing, you have to have a variety of things. One, you have to notice it. You have to tell the world you're having a public hearing. Staff does the job of checking. They're not going to bring something to you if the public hearing, if the public notice boxes haven't been checked. If it wasn't in the paper for the right amount of time, the sign wasn't on the property for the right amount of time, if the letters didn't go to the people that are supposed to get letters, it's not going to come forward. But we have to give those kinds of notices. And whole careers have been made on whether or not the notice was right or not. So there's a lot of rules. We've been over them, Callie, but that's the, she will filter that for you when it gets there. So there's the paper, there's the sign, there's mailed notice to people within a certain distance. Well, there was actually in a fight because, on a tangent, or because you don't count the street, a certain angle of a tangent, for those of you who can think back to your geometry classes, where, because you don't count the street, it ran for miles down the street before it finally tagged another property. And there was a case about whether or not that person, 17 miles away, had to get noticed because not counting the street on an angle that way, we didn't get to that property till 17 miles. So we've been over that kind of stuff. And then there's an order of procedure in a public hearing. So typically, the chair calls it, the petitioner makes a presentation. Sometimes it's previewed by Callie, sometimes they just get up and start talking. You know them as neighbors, it's not a big deal. It's not a big deal. You get to make some initial questions as a commission, as the Planning and Zoning Board, you get to make those kinds of questions. Then you take public testimony from others who are interested. Sometimes the neighbors are fighting with each other, so the neighbors come in and talk about how bad it is. If experts are involved, experts can be cross-examinated, cross-examined, and so can the petitioner owner who's looking for relief because they're going to come in and say, I need this because. Well, you can ask them about that need. But by and large, cross-exam is really left the experts, the traffic person who says this isn't going to be a problem, the noise person who says this isn't going to be a problem, the stormwater person who says this isn't going to be a problem. And then you have the traffic person who says, of course, it's a problem. The noise person who says, yes, it is. And the stormwater person who says, get out the ark, it's going to flood everybody. Those kinds of experts get cross-examined. Eventually, the petitioner, because the petitioner has the burden of proof in getting this relief, has kind of the final say. And then you close the hearing, or you can leave it open either way. We recommend that you typically close the public hearing, and then you get to discuss it, and then you vote. And your vote is a recommendation to the ultimate policymakers about what to do. And so that's the process for the Plan Commission to go through. The hearing, again, is required for all the things we talked about. The meeting, a public meeting where you don't have to hold a hearing, you don't have to go through all the rigmarole, and you don't have to collect a record, do all those kinds of things. Typically, it's more subdivision-y code stuff about sidewalks or street lamps or driveways, you know, those kinds of things. And then when you do a planned unit development, it's a two-step process. Here's the preliminary one. We're going to get out there. We intend to do it. And sometimes when the developer gets out there and starts to move earth, what is this limestone that nobody predicted was going to be at two feet? We're going to have to put the park here and put the houses where the park was. So sometimes they need to come back and amend a PUD. That's probably a hearing. But if everything worked according to Hoyle, and so it looked, the final PUD looks like the preliminary one you approved, that's just typically a meeting. You don't have to have another hearing to approve those kinds of things. So Plan Commission, you will have a few just meeting things that don't have a full hearing, but that's the minority of what you do. Majority is hearing. Council, on the other hand, has, you know, mostly meeting stuff. You're accomplishing the public's business, passing motions, sometimes resolutions, less frequently ordinances to do the public's business. And that's how we move forward. And those, you know, motion, second, discussion. Eventually, the question is called, discussion is had, is closed, and a vote is taken, and you move forward from there. And then there are questions about when can you revote or re-bring something back up again, and those are sort of specific, but you don't have to worry about those. At both meetings and the hearings, you're going to hear from the public, not just people who are immediately involved, not just the people who got letters, not just the people who saw the sign, but the public can come and be busybodies if they want. At the Plan Commission, we had, during my time on the Plan Commission, there was a person who regardless of where it was in Naperville, and Naperville was, you know, 12 miles by 14 miles, and regardless of where in that that large 150,000 people municipality, regardless of where it was, this woman who lived in this one, you know, house her whole life, she had something to say about it, whether it was 14 miles away from her in the kitty corner of city of Naperville, she had something to say about it. She opined on every single case we ever had at the language. You have to take that. That's a public hearing. That's the the public, and that's, you know, that's who we're dealing with. That's why Plan Commission meetings go till one in the morning sometimes. You need to remain, as Planning and Zoning Board members, impartial because you're in a fact-collecting, like a juror kind of mode, making those kinds of things. We don't want biases. There are rules that require you to accuse yourself sometimes. That's also true of the elected officials, but the elected officials run on a platform. These are their values when they run for an office. These are, these are what I value, whether it's, you know, I'm pro-development or I'm less aggressive, like we need more tips or we need less tips, whatever it is, that that kind of thing is, they get to be a little more biased on the scale about things because they were elected to do so and are held accountable that way. You're appointed, not accountable in the same way, and you serve a different function. The Plan Commission needs to be a little more impartial. However, both of you, both sets of bodies, need to avoid ex parte communications. So never say it in English when Latin exists. That's what the lawyers all say. So ex parte, or you're not allowed to talk directly to the petitioner. So it's hard in a community like Monticello. You're going to be at church, or you're going to be at the grocery store, and, you know, Bob's going to have, wants to have an additional accessory shed, and it's going to run into you, grocery store, and go, how's it looking for my thing? That's really not appropriate. Now, it's understandable. I mean, your neighbors, you've rubbed elbows, we've known each other a long time, but it's really not appropriate because you're not supposed to know how it's going until you hear all the evidence and testimony in the public hearing. And you're not supposed to have an opinion on it. But of course you do, you know, I don't have a problem with sheds. You've probably voted on sheds three times before. I don't have a problem with sheds, that kind of thing. You just need to be aware that as much as this neighbor of yours is probably not a problem, somebody's ox is being gored, and they're not going to find it as nice that you're already doing the deal, it's already set in stone, this was a done deal before I ever got here. That's the worst thing that can be can be accused of is that it was a done deal before we got to the hearing. And so one way to do that is to avoid talking directly about any of these things. There are certain things that it's an absolute prohibition, you go to jail, but not really most of your day-to-day stuff. So just avoid it. Likewise, you know, when it comes to property stuff, the Plan Commission, I'd always go out and look at the property, and I talk to you about not bringing a knife back. But I would always go out and look at the property and look around because if you're not familiar with what people are saying when they testify, and they'll use shorthand, well, I live over here, and so when you get down by the oak tree, you know, that's where the swale sends it all the way. So if you do this, that's all end up in my front yard. If you've not visited that, it's a little harder. So visiting the site is okay, but don't stop and talk to anybody. Don't take pictures. Don't bring them in with you to say, you know, this is my concern. The site visit's allowed, but you don't want to have the switchblade like Jimmy Stewart. You can tell Cali, I'd like to have more information from Google or better pictures, or I would like this developed. And that way, it's not you doing it, it's staff doing it, putting it in in an impartial way, and everybody's protected. So that's kind of how you go about getting the business of the Plan Commission done and getting it to the council. And you can see the corollary for you on council. Not supposed to go out there and dig around and find your own traffic count because you don't like the testimony and the evidence that was put in at the Plan Commission and go, that was crazy, they didn't count school buses. That wasn't during the school day. And so when you use the school day, and it's on a trash day, and there are extra trash trucks too, now it's, and now you've got your own count. You can bring kind of your common sense, but you're not supposed to do your own evidence. And so you can see the corollaries for City Council on any of that, regardless of what it is. The standards for requested relief that you'll have to apply as the Plan Commission, it's a similar exercise that the City Council has. The City Council sometimes has criteria for what they have to do. They have to make findings that it's in the typically in the best interest of the city to do whatever it is they're doing. They think that it's wise. Sometimes it'll be a specific finding that's written into the ordinance that we find, for example, closed session minutes. The council has to find good cause exists to keep them closed. Without that finding of good cause exists to keep them closed, they're supposed to be released to the public. So once in a while, the council makes findings, but more often than not, it's just a general criteria. Plan Commission, you're going to have specific criteria that Cali outlines in her memos to you, and that's, you're going to have to go through that process, follow that, and get those things done. Lastly, subdivision variances, they're kind of the same thing. You know, if you treat the process the same way, nobody really gets to complain, and you can move on from there. So questions on the process so far? We're really just going on slide eight, and we'll go a little faster, I promise, but that's sort of the guts of it. So any questions on that? Next, and if you've got a question on anything at any point, this is for you. It's for me, so just let me know. We'll take our questions, have to wait till the end. All right, voting then. So both bodies have to vote. That's when, that's the final action of the public business. And so what was the vote? Who voted? We've got to get that recorded. Sometimes you're abstaining, we can talk about those, but that's really not the the point of it. Votes have to be recorded, and they have to be recorded in the minutes. And so minutes, there are rules and regulations around minutes. They have to be prepared in a certain amount of time, number of meetings or a number of meetings, endings. No secret ballots. Everything is open and accountable, whether at Plan Commission or at Council. There's no such thing as a secret ballot of any kind. Sometimes you see, you know, the all those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay, and you swear to God the nays are louder than the ayes. The chair says the ayes have, bangs the gavel, and you move on. Well, there are procedures around that where you can call for a roll call. But Illinois has taken a lot of the guesswork out. Anything involving money at the, almost everything at Plan Commission is a roll call, almost everything. Approval of the minutes, you can get away with a voice vote if nobody has any changes. But other than that, Plan Commission's typically a roll call vote. City Council, there's a lot more voice voting, but anything involving money, that's got to be a roll call vote.
Yeah. You said almost all of our, has to be a
Roll call.
Roll call. How about closing the public hearing?
That has to be a voice vote.
Could be a
A voice vote.
Voice vote.
But if, but if you can't tell, if there's like, no, I want to hear more from grandma, and you'll take a roll call, and you might have to take a roll call.
I take a roll call usually on what we're there to vote on.
Yeah.
During the meeting, all favor, signal five, I say aye. That's the way I run it.
Right. And and when we were meeting only remotely by Zoom, there was a different rule in place that everything had to be a roll call. But now that we're back to meeting in person, even with Zoom in addition, but if we're back in person plus Zoom, we're back to using voice votes.
Okay.
The reason they wanted a roll call is because they wanted to make sure that people on Zoom could hear what had gone on and were voting. And also, we used to play this, because I go to a lot of these meetings, we used to play, you're on mute, bingo. Like we would have, you know, how many times is somebody going to say, you're on mute, you're muted, you're still muted, Andy, you're muted? And so we would play that game. So they switched to a roll call because people maybe said nay, but because they were muted, you didn't hear them. So we're past that. Now, if you're back to meeting in person, back to voice votes. Oh, I've been here long enough, I know. I, yeah. Surprised I'm not here filming. Anyway. We're on Zoom though, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, hi Steve.
Hello. And I am filming.
No, you're here.
I'm sure he's watching. He always attention. All right, so voting, that's got to be recorded, you know, and when in doubt for anybody, you just go to a roll call, if you're in doubt. But we do want to get the business of the public done, and that's why there are things that are invented, like a consent agenda and other things to move the business of the public along so that we can focus on discussing the things we really are most interested in discussing. So that brings us down to, the Plan Commission makes a recommendation and findings of fact that get forwarded to the council, and the council makes their decisions about those kinds of things. Sometimes approval is conditioned, and you add conditions at the Plan Commission level that the council may or may not pick up and say, well, we don't agree with you on that. And it's frustrating when you're the Plan Commission and are serving as a volunteer to think that you're doing what council's instructed. I know I had my career as a Plan Commissioner where, oh, you know, they said this, this, and this about the last kind of development, so let's hold the bell over to that. And then it gets up to the City Council, and the council goes, what were they thinking? This is completely backwards. We don't want to do this. And so, oh, all right. So then the next one, we go, okay, we were backwards last time, let's do this. And they go, what were they thinking? They blah, blah, blah. Well, that happens. They're the elected officials, they get to do that to us on the Plan Commission. But you have to make findings and recommendations, and you do the best job you can applying policy. And but that's why the elected officials who have ultimate accountability to the electorate get to make those final decisions. But let's talk about a few more things about the Open Meetings Act and the requirements for how you meet and work together. So the presumption, again, is that you only get into trouble when you're together, and so we need to alert everybody to that. So we need to know when we're having a meeting. It has to be open and in the sunshine. In these days of technology, this gets us in trouble, as does this, the computer and phone. And I'll tell you why about that in a second. Because meetings can happen, as we just saw with Zoom and other things, through all sorts of devices where you're not even near each other. Content to the agenda, elected officials' emails, talk about those things, all the ways we can get in trouble with meetings. So what kind of meetings are covered? It's any gathering of intellect, of mind. And that doesn't mean to be in the same physical space. It's a gathering contemporaneously where communication is possible. That's the gathering, whether in person or by video or electronic comments or any other means. You know, if we were skilled at smoke signals, that could be a meeting. If we were all communicating contemporaneously. It has to be a majority of a quorum that's meeting, so that's a numbers game, and for the purpose of discussing public business. So, for example, if the mayor and five aldermen are all at Rotary, is that a meeting? Well, that's a majority of a quorum. They're all in the same physical space, but they're not there to discuss public business. Now, the city might come up and somebody might, you know, kid Larry and say, oh, those potholes out there, you know, when are you going to get those fixed? That's not discussing public business. It's mentioned, but it's not discussing public, because there's no meeting. We don't have to post that five of you might be at Rotary, or at a funeral, or at church, or in the supermarket, or at a community event out on the square, like a movie night or something. We don't have to post that you may all attend because you're not going to be discussing public business. That's a critical part of it as well. It doesn't apply to political rallies. So if you run as a slater in a party and you're going about your election campaign and who's going to pay for what signs and where they're going to go, that's not the public's business. The city of Monticello does not care about anybody's politics as a corporate body. So when you're talking about your own elected politics, you're not talking about the public's business. And as I said, social events, things like church, supermarket, soccer games, softball games, that stuff doesn't matter. But what does matter can be electronic communications. Email is a friend of hope. So here's where the case law is. Here's the law. There is a case about a city councilman and alderman who wrote letters to all the other seven aldermen about a particular issue. And four of those aldermen wrote back to all the other aldermen about the same issue. And they did every one of those by putting it in the mail through the United States Post Office. And the Attorney General of the State of Illinois ruled that sending such letters, even though we're, we have a majority of a quorum each time communicating about this issue of public business through the U.S. Postal Service, that that was not contemporaneous enough. That's just sharing ideas. And so letters through the United States Postal Service, okay. Now, on the other hand, we have the phone. And if you can imagine a conference call with four of you or three of you, now we have a problem because the collective minds are meeting, talking about an issue of public business in contemporaneous time. So we know, we all know that a conference call is up. You can't do that without, that's a meeting. Email is somewhere between the United States Postal Service and a conference call. And where it is depends on how you're doing it. This is why reply all isn't a bad idea yet again. Reply all is, always gets you into trouble, and if you get an email from Terry that goes to all of you, and then you hit reply all, well, now all of a sudden, there's a, starting to be a conversation. You have sent something to all the other, you know, aldermen or all the other Plan Commissioners. And now, if one of you responds to that, now we got a, now we have a conversation going. It happens to be in print instead of orally on a, on a conference call, but it's contemporaneous enough that we're having a conversation. That's a meeting, and that's a no-no. Texting and texting during a meeting are a particular no-no. So, uh, you have to watch out whether or not you're contemporaneous enough. The same goes for, interestingly enough now, Facebook. You get on somebody's page and it says, what a great day this was at, you know, um, for the ribbon cutting for so-and-so on the square. Yes, it was. You're doing a great job, Mayor Stoner. We, we love you. Well, I don't think Mayor Stoner's doing such a good job. Oh, I believe so. Look at all the positive things he's done here. Well, when are they going to address this? And now all of a sudden you got aldermen and the mayor piling into the mayor's own Facebook commentary website about comments on a piece of public business. And if it's contemporaneous enough, now we're having a meeting on Facebook. The PAC takes a very broad and expansive view of, of what constitutes a meeting. And the key is how contemporaneous the conversation is. So you, the chair of the plan commission, you get to send out a thing that says, our meeting's being moved because we need to have more chairs. So it's being moved from council chambers to here. So they're like, that's fine. That's a communication from you to everybody else. It's not a meeting in terms of a conversation back and forth about public business. And even if somebody said, is, are you sure about that date? That's really not public business. That's just ministerial. But you need to be careful with email, but also with your media. Um, this, the PAC is focused, the public access counselor who enforces these things. So we got to get, um, there's no business without a quorum. Two of you always get to talk to each other. That, we understand that ideas are better when they're shaken around. Remember going back to this John Sturmill idea? So if two of you are shaking out an idea or you're trying to talk about, hey, I have this idea about bringing forward something to do on the, uh, about attracting business. What do you think of this? Oh, you're, you know, actually it's allowed to call Wendy and ask that question. You know, well, what do you think? You were there when we did this on the, this expansion last time. What were your, what were you guys thinking about then? You're allowed to do that. That actually pushes things forward where two of you are doing it. It's not a majority of a quorum. You have any electricity going where you can decide anything. So that's fine. Um, you gotta have the quorum before you have a meeting and that's where we have open meetings issues. Electronic participation in meetings, we've talked about that. Oh, one thing I want to say, cause Steve's on the phone, uh, meetings have to be at a place that's convenient. Um, Steve brought a case here in Monticello because we took a field trip to a park that was quite a distance away. And you can do that if you provide a means for the public to get there. And we didn't, and that was a problem. It wasn't a convenient location for a meeting. They were going to see a park that could be a basis for getting a grant and so forth. Um, so you have to have a convenient location and that means having a sufficient capacity for people. And that was tricky during COVID because you had to space people out or you could just keep people away. Uh, but now that we're back to meeting in person, if you're going to have something controversial, typically involving a church, I would say. These are the ones that pack the room. Uh, if something goes on with a church where you're going to pack the room, you may need to move once in a while to the junior high or something. Uh, to have a big enough space to be convenient for everybody to come in, who wants to come in and participate. Um, so that, that, and then electronic participation. Okay, we're in a tricky time, right? We all know that Zoom participation was allowed and that's all derivative of the governor's emergency order. The governor's emergency order is likely to sunset. Before the legislature in this last session was a bill that would say, oh, we can still all do Zoom even after the emergency order is called. That didn't pass. So when the governor's emergency order is over, we are back to only in-person meetings. And you can participate remotely only if you comply with the old rules. The old rules were, one, we have to have a policy that allows it. And we do in Monticello. And then two, you have to inform the clerk why it is that you're absent and it has to be one of the allowed reasons. Which is business, health, business of the city, for example. Uh, your own business, health, um, business of the city. Vacation is not a valid basis. Um, you could be on vacation and zoom into the meeting and nobody cared because that was those rules. But when those gone, you now have to fit into one of those and then the body has to vote to allow you in. And in my career, I've been two places where they voted no. They didn't want to have the person participate and they voted no. And so hang up the phone. Um, and that's just, you know, politics in some respect. So, um, to even do any of that then, when the governor's order comes down, you have to have a physical quorum here. You can't make up a quorum by those here plus the phone. You have to have a physical quorum and then allow others, the additional that are missing to participate. And that's going to be a stumbling block. A lot of people that got used to doing it on Zoom, but now we gotta have to have a physical quorum back in the room in order to have anybody participate remotely. Um, agendas, you have to do that. You've got to post an agenda. At the beginning of the fiscal year, the council meets and sets their regular meeting schedule. And that regular meeting schedule can sometimes around Thanksgiving time, in other words, you know, skip the usual, you know, Tuesdays or whatever. But once they set that, those are regular meetings and the agendas get posted at least 48 hours in advance of those regular meetings. Typically more than that here. But that's the requirement. And at a regular meeting, you can take action on the things that say you're taking action on them. And then you can discuss anything, even if it's not on the agenda. You can bring it up for discussion and act on it, but you can bring it up for discussion. And then there's the magic wand of ratification. So if we find out that the grant is available, but, uh, we just found out and it's due in 72 hours and we're not, you know, I don't have it on the agenda. I just found out about it and I gotta act on it. You can get a consensus of the board and we'll ratify it at the next meeting. That's perfectly lawful. That's something we can do. Staff's not out there over their skis committing you to a $50,000 match on a grant that you do want without authority. So we can handle those kinds of things. But by and large, you can only take action at a regular meeting on the stuff that's on the agenda that says it's for action. And you can discuss anything. And you can always go into executive session, even if you don't have it on the agenda, because by its nature, the law recognizes you may have an emergency. You just have to be clear about why you're going in. We'll talk about that in a second. Um, the, uh, the other thing about agendas for special meetings where you're off your regular calendar. A special meeting, and that's frankly, all plan commission meetings, just about are, are special meetings. Um, you have a regular scheduled set of meetings. And so if there's something that comes up where Cali wants to start talking about, do you guys want to start looking at the comp plan and do whatever? That covers you for those kinds of discussion things. But by and large, since you're there really to take action and make recommendations, it has to be listed on the agenda. A special meeting is off that regular calendar. Anything off that regular calendar, even if you move it like, um, well, we had it for the regular calendar, but that landed on a day now that, you know, it's homecoming or that's the big game or whatever. And so we're going to move it a week. Now you're, or, or it snowed and we can't get to the meeting. And so we're going to move it to Wednesday because we couldn't get there. Well, uh, that's a special meeting. And as soon as you move it off that regular calendar to a special day or time or location, um, for the special meeting, all you can do is what's on the agenda. You can't discuss anything that's not, you're listed for discussion and act on it. Um, and a special meeting can only be called 48 hours in advance. So, um, and that's to match the agenda posting requirement. Uh, emergency meetings are okay. They're very rare. There's very little that's an emergency, uh, these days, um, where you can't meet. But those are the kinds of meetings that you have to have. Um, at every one of these meetings, I'm over to slide 18. I've already talked about opening convenient. At, um, at slide 18, right to public comment. You get to establish the rules. We talked about that. And then the public has a right to have public comment, uh, and gets to show up and say their piece within the rules. Uh, and you can put it wherever you want in the, uh, in the meeting. And you can have one or two opportunities. You can break it up between what's on the agenda and what's not on the agenda. Um, it, you can be written form and read into the record by the clerk of a three-minute limit too. You know, enforcing the three or five-minute limit for you guys, enforcing that limit is really the mayor's call every time. The kinds of things the mayor is not allowed to distinguish between those. You're not allowed to work, to do it for residents only. Um, you can ask for an address, but people don't have to give it. Ask for a name, but they don't have to give it. You can ask them to fill out a form, but they don't have to do so. You can establish time limits and those can be respected and enforced by the mayor as the mayor runs the meeting. You can enforce rules on decorum, you know, and obscene speech, uh, and also, you know, death, defamatory statements. You have a lot of protection when you are at the dais, whether on the plan commission or the council for things you say. But people might get up and say things about, you know, you're corrupt or you're conflicted or you should recuse yourself. And that's up to the mayor to call that as whether we're going over the line into something that's being defamatory or not appropriate. You know, but you can't, uh, there are certain things you're not allowed to restrict. Um, part of it is while you can be wrong about obscene speech, you know, if somebody wants to get up and take a pick. If they want to talk about blue lives matter or black lives matter, you can't just, you know, discriminate between that. You're allowed to petition your government. That's the heart of political speech. And even if there are diametrically opposed kinds of views being stated, that's what they get to do. And again, you can't restrict residents only. The only other part about the meeting, this rarely happens at plan commission. Frequently happens at council is going into closed session. Again, that doesn't have to be on the agenda. You can always go into executive session. You just have to cite the rules you're going in. This is the one place we have to tape. The public can always tape our meetings, but obviously the public's not in closed session with us. We have to tape it for one purpose only. And that's to, in case we're alleged to have violated the Open Meetings Act. So the Public Access Bureau, uh, can listen to the tape or a judge can listen to the tape and decide whether or not we complied, whether what we were talking about was actually, uh, a valid subject for a closed session. So you have to identify what the exception is. There are popular ones like 2C5, which is to buy property. 2C1 is specific personnel, the performance or employment, terms of employment of a specific employee. Those kinds of things, those are the popular ones. Uh, you have to state why it is. Let's say we're back there and we're talking, um, to Terry about Terry's performance. And Terry brings up something about, I'd like to do this for, uh, the, the sergeants. These are, or I'd like to do this for this class of employees. Well, that'd be 2C2, but you didn't say 2C2 out in the meeting when you went into it. It used to be that we would talk about it, then come out and then public can go for the record on the minutes. We also talked under 2C2 about, uh, benefits for a specific class of employees. The PAC has said that's not appropriate. We're not allowed to do it after the fact. We would have to stop the closed session, go back into public, say, we need to go back and talk about 2C2. Then take that vote and go back into closed session. I know it's, um, yeah. Sometimes common sense doesn't work. Um, but those are the rules. And, you know, typically if there's anything tricky, we talk to Terry or to the mayor about it before it happens. There are specific limits of, of things that can be talked about back there. Whether to sell municipal property is not an appropriate subject for, um, closed session. Whether to sell something, uh, the property is for the public to hear. What price to sell it at? Well, obviously we can go back into closed session because we're only hurting the taxpayer. If we say, well, we want to sell a setting price of, uh, you know, whatever, 10,000 an acre, but we'll take six. You say that out loud in the public, nobody's offering you 10. And the same on the buy side, you know, I've got, well, you know, go ahead and offer eight Terry, but you can go up to 10. Well, now we're going to be paying 10. So there are certain things that are allowed and certain things that aren't. Another one that is a frequent mistake that's made is I want to talk about specific personnel. And then you go back there and talk about the impact on budget. That's not an appropriate thing. Yeah, you kind of were talking about their compensation, but really you're talking about the impact on budget and that's not an appropriate topic. So you have to talk about the budget out here. And when you talk about specific personnel, uh, and salary for one or two specific people, you know, or a class of people. We can probably fit those in, but you have to be very precise about it. Uh, and so you want to do that. So that's the Open Meetings Act stuff. And then lastly, I want to talk briefly about FOIA, um, the Freedom of Information Act. Here, what I really want to talk about is don't go out in the world and create problems for people. And what I mean by that is, so Freedom of Information Act request comes in, it's for all of the city's records. Your communications about city business as elected officials or as plan commissioners, uh, are public records. Those communications, we're entitled to know what people talk to you about. If you routinely take them as text to each other or from constituents, well, our FOIA officer is supposed to be able, an FOIA request, to put his or her hand on the Bible and swear or affirm that they checked all the databases. And that they've reviewed them all and here are all the records. And so if you routinely have them only on your phone, well, then you gotta turn your phone over to the FOIA officer for everything on that. Or the, or we're calling you about that. So that's causing a problem. The way you solve that is you have a dedicated Monticello email account and that's what you use, uh, for all your correspondence. And that way we're able to search it and we can affirm that we have searched the relevant database. But, uh, everybody recognizes that's not how the real world works. You know, people from your softball team. You know, people from church. You know, people from the hardware store who have your personal email or your text message. So what do you do when they send you a text message about a piece of public business? You forward it to your Monticello email account so that it's there. And then you respond from that. And then you encourage your softball mates, the other parents who got your name from the snack list or who got your name from the church road, uh, uh, roll call to use that to do about city business. But if you're not forwarding things, then we have to ask you for your phones and we have to do a search. And if there's a fight, then the PAC takes your phone, subpoena your records. Don't, that's just creating a problem for you and for us. So get into the habit of using the city's email for all of your city business, whether as a plan commissioner or as a, uh, city council member. I've got the other stuff on ethics and all the rest, but you guys know most of those rules. I'm not finished talking about those due for the time we have. So a couple of other questions that, um, I was given ahead of time and then I'll take whatever questions you have or the staff has. One of them is, who speaks for the city? Well, only the collective body can really speak for the city. Now, when it comes to like we had during COVID, are you going to allow cocktails to go? Well, obviously the liquor commissioner can speak for himself. He's got those powers. But when it was, uh, are we going to be more forgiving of water bills? None of you could speak for the city until you all decided as a matter of policy, what you were going to do about water bills. And then staff so instructed by the policymakers could inform people, this is what we're going to do about water bills during COVID. When, when the moratorium is in place, those kinds of things. There's an official city Facebook page. There's a city official, and you've charged people with administering the webpage and the Facebook page and what content goes there. Each of you though probably has your own Facebook page, I mean, as a way to communicate with your, way to communicate with other elected officials or to communicate with the public generally about what's going on. And you're entitled to your first amendment rights to speak on those kinds of things. Just bear in mind, you do not speak for the city. You can't bind the city. You can't promise things on behalf of the city. Uh, and you can't, um, in other words, represent or bully or in any way sort of get people to bite on what it is that you think that the view should be. So who speaks for the city? Depending on the topic, it's, uh, as set by policy collectively, how the city speaks for itself. Trying to think of what other questions there were. I don't know, I'll just let you guys ask. What, what other questions do you have? What, did I miss any? All the ones you sent me today, Terry.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
So if we send on email, say about PPD members, I'll respond to that.
Well, okay. So what, what are you doing?
Yeah, more than just like, hey, we can talk about this.
Well, we, what I typically do is I BCC all board members and they'll respond to me and I would share it with everyone.
And that's the perfect way to break up the contemporaneous nature. Because it, but the BCC is a great function. There are municipalities who have as a matter of policy and rule that it's the only way people are to be communicated with. But that's hard though, because we all like to have the city council as opposed to trying to remember each, how to spell everybody's name, you know, exactly the correct way. But that being said, uh, the, uh, BCC is a great way. And then you route questions just back to the and then you route questions just back to the staff person who sent it. Who needs to inform everybody of the same answer? You all need to be brought equal in terms of the communication and the information you have. We're not playing favorites here. But by Cali or Terry or you doing it, it breaks up the contemporaneous nature of it. So while all of the bodies getting communications kind of at the same time, and even though some are asking questions and it's going back, it's not become a contemporaneous meeting because it's filtering through a choke point, if you will, which you shouldn't.
On that line as well, what are your thoughts or how would you advise on communicating with consultants? So in the past, we had... We have individuals engineers. It makes that, just as one example, it makes a very tricky situation because now you have potentially 10 different people reaching out to one consultant.
Right, and that's Jimmy Stewart. That's bringing a night. You reached out and got some facts that you didn't share with everybody else, and now you're gonna share them in a way that's not productive when we get into the public business. The appropriate way, if you have questions about an engineer's report that you've gotten through from plan commission, and you look at this report, and you, "I don't understand what plan commission did, and I have these questions about this report." And sometimes that's because you have specific knowledge that is applicable from your experience, life experience, or your job, or whatever. The proper way to handle those is to send the questions to the staff person involved, whether it's Cali or Terry, and say, "These questions I would like addressed." And then hopefully, that's done in enough time in advance of the meeting that not only does Terry get the answers, but he shares the answers with everybody. All of the aldermen get, "Here are the questions that I was asked to ask the consultant, the engineer, or whoever. Here are the answers they gave. I'm sharing this information with you ahead of time." The more that you're all on the same page or working from the same information, the better the conversation's gonna be about the value of that information or what its outcome should be. Whereas if somebody says, "Well, I've got these facts, and now there's some discrepancy about, well, that's what, is that what the engineer said? Because he said something different to me." Now we got a credibility question about what the data says, as opposed to all being on the same page about what the data is, the same set of data from which to answer a question. So trying to make sure everybody's working from the same set of information is best achieved by working through the staff member who gets it, and then we share those answers with everybody. If one of you calls me for a legal question, and I work for the council, I work for the body. If one of you calls me typically with a question, I not only answer you, but I copy Terry to let him know that this is the answer. And then I ask Terry to send it to all of council so that everybody knows what the question is and what my advice was, and so it's not gonna be any sort of secret. So when y'all get together, that the electricity crackles, and we're gonna do things, y'all need to be working from the same data. So that's how you should handle questions. You have materials in the packet.
You've brought up a couple of things. City email accounts. We all have a city email account. And it's my feeling, well, the council does. I don't know if the commission or PZB does. They do. Anyway, you need to check those on a regular basis. This is an awful lot of information that is shared that people have no clue about because they never look. Okay? Please make sure that you look regularly because a lot of announcements are made, a lot of information is shared. Because it's not, I find it very embarrassing myself to have a meeting, we're in public, and somebody will ask a bonehead question that was answered in something that you got from the city that takes care of that. So, you know, try to be more diligent about reading your emails from on your city account, okay? That's just an aside. Doesn't have anything to do with dirks, what dirks say.
In terms of procedures, well, one thing this reminds me of that we've had, I've had this question come up before here. The last time I did this was a few years ago, was about your procedures for passing ordinances. That's up to you all to decide. So I think you have the second reading tradition here. You don't have to have that. That's up to you. But because you're a non-home rule community, you have to abide by your own ordinance. If you're a home rule community, you don't have to follow your own ordinance. It's crazy, I know. But when you are a non-home rule community, then everything is to be by the book, and that includes your own book. So if you gave yourself your own rule, you have to follow your own rule. And so, you know, if you want to do away with the second reading thing, you can do that, but you have to do it and take it out of your code of ordinances before you're allowed it. You can set that procedure.
That's something I've wondered about, the requirement for the second reading. I'm not sure how long ago that was implemented, but I feel like in the year and a half I've been on council, I think there's maybe been one time that we didn't waive the second reading. So that's where, I'm just curious, like, is there some sort of safety net by having the requirement? And then we think, if we don't have the second reading and we need more time for something?
Well, you can always table to the next meeting. I mean, there are all sorts of ways to handle something that comes up where you feel like you need more time when you get more information before voting. But the reason for the second reading is it only applied typically to ordinances because ordinances are special in terms of what they do. They're the highest level of dignity. They can only be changed by other ordinances. And so, given what they're doing, one of the issues was what colloquially we refer to, at least kind of at the staff level, as packet openers. You're busy people. This isn't a full-time job. You know, you're, and you're, this is community service, and it is invariable and inevitable that you're gonna come to a meeting where you opened the packet today as you're coming into the hall. And so the question was, you're not really prepared to vote. And so, given that ordinances were carrying this weight of what they were doing, the idea was, no matter what, how bad your day was, no matter when you were opening the packet, you'd at least be two meetings' worth of introduction and then voting for passage of the day, that you could find out if you weren't prepared. You'd be able to find out and maybe vote differently at the second reading and stop something. That is this important that it gets in ordinance. But your staff, you know, Terry and Cali are for both bodies, are trained to try and preview this stuff as much in advance as possible so that, and then in the presentation even during, that we, the packet opener dilemma doesn't exist here. But that's why it was a safety net. It was the idea is that for some people, they're just not gonna be able to digest the information, or they might want more information, and the second reading provided one out. Well, if you get into a discussion about something on an ordinance and you feel that there's missing information, you can make the case to the rest of the body to say, I mean, it's, because somebody's gonna move to waive it, right? So you're gonna have a vote either way. That's the practical outcome of your council meeting. Somebody's moving to waive the second reading, and you're gonna have to make the case for, "No, this is why we need to have a second reading because I need more information on this, or this question isn't answered." It's the same case you're gonna make for delaying the action of the body. So why do, why I always have to waive it? Why not go to the, I believe in the big efficiency of this stuff, consent agendas and other things, so that you can really focus on discussing what it is you really want to focus on discussing? Because we just have only X amount of time. Nothing, although I did plenty of plan commission meetings that went till 1:00 in the morning. They really weren't that great after 10 o'clock because we're tired. And they didn't say things because they just were tired. Some people would just go home, and they had something valuable to say. So if you really believe in valuing and respecting people's time on the public business to focus on what the most important things we need to talk about, really shake around in that shake-up method of John Stuart Mill democracy, making things more efficient, like doing away with second readings all the time so that you only have to move the table the things you really want to talk about more later, that seems to be the more efficient way to go, but that's my two cents. It's, you know, you live here, it's your...
Things are better now because council has their packet. Instead of by Friday at 5:00, it's usually by, it's Wednesday at 5:00. They have much more time to look, if they're interested in looking. And if they have questions, they have time to deal with staff or chair or whatever. So I question whether it's necessary to use the second reading, but that's just me.
Yeah, well, it's up to you all. If you want to remove it, we can prepare an ordinance to take that down. But it's gonna take a second reading to take it down. Unless you waive it.
You can table it, you can postpone.
A hundred ways to do it.
There's all kinds of ways to do it without having to do it.
And that's, again, just that I feel like we consistently waive the second reading, and then when we do want more information, then it becomes, well, why do they want more information about this when they don't ever want more information about anything else? And it's not that, I don't know.